All right, we got 5:30. We'll go ahead and get the meetings, call the meeting to order. Item 2.1, B.O. Elementary Project Update. Mr. Boarderlaw?
Good evening, members of the board and staff. First item up on our agenda is an update on the Marshall F.B.O. Elementary School. I've got two representatives from the architectural firm, Architect Southwest, who will give us a brief presentation.
Thank you for having us. My name is Jeff Augustine. I'm the project manager. And we have Stephen Domain, who's the project architect. We've been working on this project for the last year or so. Met with the committee several times to develop program. And we are close to wrapping up schematic design. Matter of fact, we have a meeting Friday of next week to meet with the committee again to finalize. The image that you see here on the screen is the overall development. The project site is to your far left. It's approximately seventeen acres. And it's being carved out of an eighty-acre parcel that's currently owned by the B.O. Company. What you see to the far, far right is a development that they have underway now. It's, uh, it's being designed. And my understanding is they're pretty far along with that. So where our new school is going is definitely gonna be a part of a new community area. Matter of fact, Architect Southwest is working with the B.O. Company to develop what we call a traditional neighborhood development in between the commercial sector to your far right and the, and the school building on the left. We're also working, have been working with Broussard, the city of Broussard, on some infrastructure. You'll see the red dot is a, a community lift station. That'll be a shared lift station in order to provide sewer for our school. They're also talking about possible improvements to the Martel Road, which right now is a small two-lane road. There's a drainage servitude that goes through the property when the process of rerouting that and working on that. The next page, our next image is a close-up there of the school site. With the seventeen acres that we have, it, uh, it was beneficial to go to a two-story scheme, so that's what you're seeing here. It also worked with the program in that it condensed the building and made travel distance from one end of the school to the other faster than it had we gone with a traditional one-story scheme where things would have been spread out. The green that you kinda see to the bottom is a detention or retention pond. The idea there is in a heavy rain event that we would have some water on site, but by the time, uh, you know, a couple of days had passed, depending on the severity of the storm, that water would, uh, would leave the site. There would be no steep banks or anything like that there. Parking-wise, we've got accommodations for a hundred parking spaces up along Fairfield. What you see there is a long loop. The idea is they have the buses come in off of Fairfield, uh, which also the city is working to improve that road. I'm not sure when that's gonna take place, uh, but that's gonna be widened there to improve, uh, infrastructure. Car riders would be approaching the site from Martel Road. In working with, uh, the committee, the idea would be to force the parents to come from the south up Martel Road around the loop. We have accommodations on the site for approximately a hundred cars. To do that, we're gonna have to have a two-lane, um, road once you get onto the property. We're looking at the possibility of having a covered drive canopy for car riders where they could process about six cars at a time. Three bumper-to-bumper, uh, two, uh, two-wide. Buses, we're looking to accommodate anywhere from ten to eleven buses at one time and having about four or five of those with, uh, covered drop-off to help move those through quickly. Uh, one of the things that was recently added to the program is an exterior canopy. You'll see that kinda gray square to the, the bottom left of the, the yellow building. And that would just be a covered structure that'd allow kids a place to get out of the sun or out of the, out of the rain if it's a, a light rain event in order to play bas- basketball or something like that. Program-wise, we have two, uh, playground areas. You see the green area to the far right, that's for pre-K and kindergarten. The idea is that they would be able to exit directly from their classrooms to the kindergarten, uh, pre-K, uh, play space. The bigger kids would play where you see the exterior canopy and out in that, uh, yard area there. Program-wise, uh, we're looking at two pre-K classrooms. Uh, the, uh, pre-, uh, the kindergarten through fifth grade are all five classrooms. We have a special needs accommodations for nine spaces. Five, uh, science classrooms, a foreign language, one art classroom, and two music classrooms. We have a commons area, what we call the caf- cafeteriaum, uh, because as you'll see in the next slide when we're looking at that space, it does have an, uh, an interior area should there be inclement weather and they need someplace to go. Uh, we have a central media center and then, of course, the typical building services. This is the first floor plan of the school. The light yellow up front is the cafeteriaum, uh, and then we have a movable partition with a commons area. The commons area would be where they could go indoors to practice if need be. Budget does not allow on this particular project at this time to do a full, uh, gymnasium. That's, uh, the reason why we have the interior smaller space and then the covered space outside. The cafeteria up front, uh, that was a program element. The idea is they encourage kids to eat breakfast, give them a place to gather before and after school. Uh, you can see up front where the red is, that's administration. We have, uh, a mantrap at that entrance, uh, to, for security reasons. Uh, the lavender color would be the art music, uh, area. And then the central part where it's kind of that mustard color would be the, uh, media center. Being a two-story building, this media center would be a two-story space. Uh, again, it's a, it's central hub, it's a vital space, and we wanted to make sure that everybody had, uh, access and, and visual as well as, uh, physical access to that space. The upper, um, right, if you will, the kind of light color, uh, I don't know, peach, and then you have sort of the orange, uh, the peach is the pre-K. Uh, you've got five kindergarten classrooms, and then you've got the first grade, which is one of the yellows to the south of that wing, and then you've got the second grade. So the first floor, we want to keep the small kids there so they don't have to climb stairs or anything like that. Uh, we will have a large-size elevator, uh, in the center, uh, near that first science room, and that would allow access up and down, uh, for the physically-enabled and, as well as, uh, moving services, uh, up and down vertically. That center space that you see, that's all your core stuff. Uh, we do have some of the special ed classrooms in that area, storage, bathrooms, and such. Each of these pods has a central science area, a place that, uh, we call maker spaces, um, where you'll have some visibility in with some glass. These are where you have a lot of activities going on. Uh, and again, like the media center, it's sort of a central hub. Then on the second floor, the second floor space would be the classroom areas where you have third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, again with your, your, your common, uh, core areas in the middle with the science, foreign language. There's three sciences up here. And then views into the media center from above. And you'll see these little rooms called tutoring rooms. Uh, that's where they could have breakout spaces to help students that are maybe struggling with, uh, with their curriculum. And then, of course, the, the gymna-, or the cafeteriaum would also be a two-story space. Our schedule right now, as I indicated earlier, we're looking to wrap up schematic design next Friday when we make a presentation to the, the building committee. We're committed to getting this project, uh, bid and constructed so that the, uh, fall of 2019 would be, uh, the first, uh, first classes, um, for the, the facility. In order to do that, we have condensed our schedule where we have design development and construction documents throughout the, the end of this year with the idea of going before the board sometime in January, uh, for that board meeting to get approval to move into bidding. Uh, bidding would start in February, typically takes, uh, thirty or so days, and then you've got time for closeout. We wanna leave as much time as possible for construction. If you condense the construction schedule, it increases the cost. So we're trying to keep this as a standard delivery in order to keep costs down. And we're looking and estimating about fourteen months on this particular facility. Any questions?
Let's see here, a hundred vehicles on site in stacking lane. That's the, uh, car rider line?
Yes, that's correct.
A hundred vehicles. We gotta, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, in my opinion, address that, uh, sooner the better. A hundred vehicles, that's, that's not enough.
There's, there's a couple of ways we've looked at that, and we realize that that's a, an issue, an increasing issue, um, to try to not tax the, the city roads. The city has, you know, uh, indicated that they're willing to widen that, but a part of the hundred is a shoulder that we're counting that starts at the corner of the property line. In order to increase that, we would, we could go to three, possibly four lanes with that two-lane road in there. Uh, you know, we don't wanna increase the size of the loop as far as length, uh, because that starts to cut into the playground space. And we're already a small site at seventeen acres, an acre of that being detention. So that's something we can certainly work with the committee on, uh, to increase that.
So the double lane is, uh, it's, it's, they're both one-way?
Yeah, you have a double lane coming in. You'll see a center lane for the parking. That would be staff parking. Uh, reason we're keeping that separate is you have deliveries that come anytime throughout the day, and we don't wanna interrupt the, the car rider.
So is that a hundred cars per lane or a hundred cars total?
No, that's total. From where you have the covered drop-off coming with the, the two lanes all the way around to the, to Martel Road, and then down to the intersection you see with the neighborhood, that would be a single-lane shoulder. Once you got on-site, it would go to two lanes. So that entirety is a hundred cars.
And that would be the only, um, car drop-off lane on this site?
That's correct. This is solely dedicated to car drop-off.
Okay, we-
Now, one thing we could do to kinda increase that is obviously we could move the, the drop-off canopy closer to Martel Road, but that requires the students to have to travel further, uh, you know, and increase the length of that drop-off, you know, canopy, which, you know, equates the cost. So there's multiple, you know, ways we can look at this.
How did we come up with that hundred number?
That was something that the committee had designated early on. Again, we don't, we've been working on this program for probably well over a year. Uh, I know that this recent school year has been probably the worst when it comes to, and it's on the agenda, the car rider. Uh, and so I've heard numbers like two-hundred-and-fifty for some of the other schools. Um, you know, again, it all just comes down to budget, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, that's a concern. And, you know, underbuilding out of the gate just doesn't make any sense. And it becomes a major concern because on the highway, and we're gonna hear about that tonight, but-
Right.
Um, I say the highway. Martel Road is not a highway, but it's a public street.
By no means. It's a, it's a farm road right now.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Dawn? Uh, let me see, I wrote a-
I'm glad you mentioned build-out, 'cause right now, we're, we're building for, uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty kids, although it will handle eighty, uh, eight-hundred based on the capacity of the classrooms, but it has a built-in core for a thousand. That's what we had targeted with the building, uh, program.
Great.
So there's room for expansion. Matter of fact, uh, off each end of those wings, we've made sure to leave space to add, uh, two of each of the grade levels. So you would have two kindergarten, two first grade, so on and so forth. That would get you up to your, your thousand.
Um, and you, you expected the bidding to take how long? I'm sorry, I see fourteen months for bidding and construction, but-
Right. Typically bidding, you know, you have public bid laws, so you have to go thirty days, you know? You have your announcements in the paper, and then it's, you gotta give them thirty days to bid. And it takes a couple of weeks in order to, you know, get all the documents together and, and be able to-
So sixty days?
Yeah.
Max?
Yeah.
Okay. Those are the only questions I had. Does anybody here have any questions regarding the, uh, B.O. Elementary construction? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Item 2.2, uh, Mr. Boarderlaw, did you have anything else on?
Mr. Hidalgo.
No, sir.
Would you like the architects maybe to, um, maybe work on maybe three lanes to see if, how that might work? Would you-
Something we'll certainly look at between now and next Friday.
Yep. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.2, Westside Elementary Innovations, Mr. Boarderlaw?
So, so Mr. Hidalgo, uh, Mary Morrison was not able to make the meeting. She asked that we pull this. She very much wants to hear the presentation, so she'd like to schedule this at the next facility committee meeting, if that's acceptable.
All right, item 2.3, car rider lines at schools. Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Boarderlaw?
Okay, um, we, we put this, uh, item on the agenda at, uh, board members' request to begin some discussions. Um, sorry, wait a minute, wrong thing's coming up here. There's, we're, we're having, um, car, car rider, uh, queuing lines at many schools that are many more cars than we've had in previous years. I can't explain why. I do not have a reason why. Some, some folks are just not choosing to put their children on the bus, so they're choosing to drive their children to school. Um, I've, I've got a short, short presentation here on just a couple of the schools. It's not all of them because that would probably take entirely too long. But, um, one of the schools that recently has, has asked for some assistance was, is Ernest Galette Elementary. If you look on the screen, um, what we, what we have now is a, a car rider line that starts where you'll see the cursor is. The, the traffic enters the driveway off of Highway ninety-two. They proceed parallel to Highway ninety-two, make the curve, start following Shemam Etary, make a U-turn, and come back along the fence all the way back to the concrete driveway. Uh, this, this is approximately a hundred-and-ten cars of queuing space that we have on-site. Had one of the, one of the engineers here in town take a look at, at, at an, at an alternative, and that was to make the, uh, inside lane double-wide to get more cars. This, this add, this brings up the queuing capacity to about a hundred-and-fifty-nine cars. So we're adding about forty-nine more cars by doing this. However, we would have to move the fence inward. Uh, probably gonna be some drainage work that's gonna have to be adjusted, um, because of the site drainage that's already in place, so we don't adversely affect site drainage. One of the things that the, um, city engineer for the town of Youngsville approached me with last week, uh, and, and, and they have had discussions with the chief of police, is to limit where the cursor is, limit the left-turn lane coming from the, the roundabout. They believe, they, they even had someone go and sit out in the parking lot across the street at the CVS pharmacy and found that there were people coming from the roundabout, basically from the direction of Milton, and they were stopping in hi-, in Highway ninety-two, trying, waiting to make a left turn to enter the site. And that was causing traffic to back up all the way into the roundabout. And once the roundabout got clogged up, they had gridlock. Uh, so that was one of the issues they, they saw as they sat out there to monitor the situation. So what they're proposing is that the city of Youngsville would put up a sign right, right here where the cursor is that would prohibit left turns during those peak hours of morning drop-off and afternoon pickup. If someone wanted to come and pick up their child, and they were approaching from the roundabout, simply all they would have to do is drive down a couple of hundred yards to the next roundabout, go through the roundabout by the Texaco Station, and approach the site from, from the east and make a right turn into the site. Also, in addition to that, the exiting traffic from Ernest Galette, uh, the city is proposing that we have a right turn only for those parents to exit our site. Another thing they've seen is that parents who are trying to exit the site, who are trying to make a left to go back east, eastward, are holding up the, the line from getting out of our site because they're, they're waiting on traffic to make a left turn. If we made it a right turn out, then those people who want to go east would simply have to just make a right out of our site, go a hundred yards down to the roundabout, go through the roundabout, and then they're headed back east again. It, it keeps the flow of traffic moving, and since we, we, we would be using those roundabouts that are already in place to our advantage, and it keeps the traffic moving. So my understanding is that the chief of police is on board with that. Um, I've spoken to Dr. Aguilar about it. He's in agreement. I've spoken to the principal. Uh, she's on board with that, and we believe that's, that's a viable solution that will not cost us anything at this point in time. Any questions on that?
Yeah. Yeah, if you can clarify that. You talked about the, uh, widening the, the, this side of the, the lane here on the right-hand side-
Right.
-and making it two lanes. And you said there's no cost to do that?
No, no, I didn't say that. I said there is a cost to do that.
Okay.
Probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred-and-fifty to a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars.
Okay. Um, I think one of the things that might have been left out, whoever went and sit at the CVS, uh, station, I think one of the things they left out when they reported to you is that not only are people trying to turn left onto the school site backing up traffic, but the reason that they're backing up traffic and not being able to turn left is because the people coming from the right-hand side are also waiting to get onto the school site. So the school site is full, and both sides are backing up traffic. So the gridlock is in both directions. So, uh, I do, uh, I did get a call from the city engineer, and they indicated to me that they were putting the no-left turn and right-turn-only signs. Um, I don't know when, but I, I'm not sure that that in and of itself is gonna solve the problem. It'll probably ease it a little bit, um, but I don't see how that solves the problem. Again, the, the site gets full. Now, in the mornings, it appears that it gets full for quite a bit longer than, than it does in the afternoon. Um, so, well, yeah, and, and do we know why there's a hundred-car difference from the morning to the afternoon?
Because of the lions. So we have more in the morning. But in the morning, it's a lot easier for the traffic to flow in the morning because they get there at different times. In the afternoons, most of them get there starting at one-thirty.
Yeah.
We did try last year, and I bet you met the car. We tried making everyone turn out of the parking lot and turning right. And our experience last year is that it would get gridlocked in the parking lot because everyone would be trying to take the right, and the street was still backed up until you couldn't get on the street. So we started letting them go both directions just to divide off the traffic. Then we couldn't let cars, let them drop off. But I think that maybe if we tried in both places, that maybe it would work. I mean, it's an option, like how?
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, because looking at the chart, it looks pretty consistent that drop-offs in the morning are significantly higher than in the afternoon.
I was wondering, you're spending the morning-
Right. And it's not just your school. It looks like it's common. Lafayette High School is five-hundred-and-forty in the morning and a hundred-and-ten in the afternoon. Okay, so-
In the morning, it's easier for parents to put their kid in the car and drop them off on the way to work than it is for them to sit on a corner where a bus is picking up at one uni-, at one spot for the whole neighborhood.
Right.
And they're just dropping them off. In the afternoon, the parents at work, so the kids have to go home on the bus.
Right. So one of my thoughts, um, is, and it's gonna be different for each school and each community, is, um, has, have we done, or have y'all done, any kinda survey with the parents to figure out why they're choosing to drop off? Um, because Galette is all in-zone kids, right? None of them are in the situation where they're at a school of choice and they have to get transportation. So why are your parents choosing, besides the convenience? Are there other issues they're concerned with? Is it bus safety? Is it the lack of seat belts on the buses? Um, if we put cameras on the buses, will that help? Um, the buses are too crowded. Can we approach this from a different point to try to decrease the number of drop-offs? But we can't do that until we analyze the reasons. So, you know, and I, I mean, just ask them, why do you use the bu-, why don't you use the bus? And be as specific as possible. It can be anonymous. And I think that all of the schools should do that, um, like Lafayette High School and, uh, what was the other one? Uh, STEM. So STEM is a hundred percent choice. Lafayette is mostly in-zone, uh, but they both have about the same number of drop-offs in the morning. And I know the high schools start at a ridiculously early time, uh, except for those poor kids, and maybe they're getting their thirty extra minutes of sleep. I don't know. Right. So do we need to add air conditioning on our buses? Will that fix this problem? It seems like it might be more cost-effective to deal with those kinda issues rather than making your driveway bigger, though, than we just do that driveway? That, right? So, um, there may be more than one-way skin this cat. Um, so a survey asking for as much detail as possible, 'cause there may be a large group of people who just say, "Well, we don't like our bus driver. They're mean, they're rude." Well, then, we can address that from a different side, okay? I mean, we don't know until we ask them. Um, and then the other option, like here in Youngsville, um, can we look at or talk to the local law enforcement to see if we can get, um, some traffic direction in the morning? Like with the gridlock, if you have an officer directing traffic like they do at the private or parochial schools, and that could help as well. So that may be another option as well.
Galette Elementary is what I would consider a classic example of you build it and more will come. Uh, because, uh, as you could see, the, the front, uh, if you wanna call it the front circle, that's concrete, was, that was a, part of the original construction, and it, it served fine for several years. Uh, however, at some point after that, more car riders were showing up, and right about where the cursor is, uh, off of Shemam Etary, there was a culvert that was in place when we bought the property that was just left in place. So someone came up with the idea of, well, let's, let's use that culvert, bring in the car riders there, and we'll put a gravel driveway, uh, to, to bring the cars in and follow along the fence and, and reverse the flow of the front circle, uh, and, and we'll, we'll stack up more cars and get them off the street. So that worked for a while, uh, until it filled up and it started clogging up the streets around Galette. Uh, so later on, a driveway was put right near where the U-turn is in the back, um, to, to lengthen the queue line. Well, that worked for a while, a few years, until the cars started piling up more and more again. And then just a few years ago, you may remember that the city of Youngsville offered us some free crushed limestone to double the length of the queue line, which we did. And, um, that worked fine for a while, and, and now we're still, we're here again talking about the same issue where you build it and more will come. So, uh, anyway, moving right along, uh, this is an aerial of Charles Burke Elementary. Went out there recently because the principal, uh, called me and asked to come take a look because they were having issues with cars. Uh, if you see where the pointer is, right about where the three-forty-three is on Ridgefield Road, that's, was a car rider entrance, where they would pull up and drive over to the front canopy and pick up and exit out onto Ridge Road. The, the other loop is for the school buses. That's the faculty parking lot and the school buses, so we have the advantage of having a separate car rider line loop and a bus loop. So what was happening at Burke was cars were accumulating on South Ridgefield Road and, uh, residents and through traffic, and I believe state troopers were starting to get upset because of the amount of traffic that was, uh, building up on South Ridgefield Road. So, um, the principal, um, took the cars and brought them onto Ridge Road, entered the site, entered the, the parent loop on Ridge Road where you see the pointer, came down the driveway, went around this, if you, quarter-circle, and got back in line, got them back in line to pick up at the front loop, and then follow the same driveway out to Ridge Road. So you had traffic entering and exiting onto Ridge Road, uh, just a few hundred feet away from, from the entry and exit point of the school buses. This is, uh, a temporary measure. It, it got, it got the cars off of South Ridgefield Road. However, some of the cars are, are beginning to pile up on Ridge Road, and it does create a problem when some of the cars are approaching from the west and, and stopping on Ridge Road, and some of the cars are approaching from the east waiting- cars are approaching from the east, waiting to turn left into the site. Um, so, for any traffic that's there around that time wanting to just pass on through down Ridge Road, it gets kinda tricky for them because, um, because they have to, they have to try to get around two lanes of stop traffic from two different directions. So, that, that's, there's an issue there. Um, the next school that I'm showing here is Bruceard Middle School. Bruceard Middle School is, is, uh, ha- has had an increase in car traffic for the last several years. One of the things that was done, um, if you can see where the cursor is, there was a, a, a draw- a concrete driveway was placed there. Um, I'm thinking it was probably eight or ten years ago, uh, and the purpose of that driveway was to bring car riders into this entry driveway off of Morgan Avenue. They would take a, an immediate left turn, drive down this, this, I'm gonna call it the new driveway, then they would make an immediate right and loop, make basically a U-turn and then they would go through the, this parking area, uh, back to the travel lanes and then make another U-turn to go over to the canopy that, this, this canopy that's along the cafeteria. Am I saying that right, John? No, I'm saying that wrong?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, it was working that way at one time, but what, how are you doing it now?
Okay. Um, there are four lanes of car riders. So, the, the first driveway you talked about is the, the new one.
Okay.
Then, right across is another.
Okay.
So, each of those lanes holds two lanes of cars.
So, you, you're double wide?
Yes.
With cars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the buses and the cars all come in in the same entrance. The buses go to the buildings where the canopy is.
Okay.
And the cars park on those two.
So, which way, once the cars pick, do, are the cars loading up basically in those travel lanes?
Yes.
Okay. And you have, you have faculty that's allowing them to move once there's no more kids walking around?
And, yes, we wa- we, the children meet at the front of the school. We walk them to empty spaces in the parking lot.
Okay.
And, 'cause it's blocked off and then they get into the cars from either side. There are some major issues though, because when it rains, we have to put the kids under the canopy, which means we have to loop around all four lanes of traffic back around to the building.
Okay.
So, and because we, well, I'm sorry.
You let the buses out first, right? Like on, in the afternoons, you let the buses out first?
No, we start moving the cars first.
Oh, okay.
We found that if we start moving the cars first, then it's not as big a pileup because some of those cars are going right and some of them are going left.
Okay.
Instead of going left, end up in traffic blocking the entrance. So, nobody can get in.
Do, do all of the parents approaching the site, do they approach from the south?
Both directions.
Both directions, wow.
And the only entrance is that south entrance.
Right. Right here. Another issue. Next school, uh, Plantation Elementary School. Um, Plantation Elementary School on the corner of, uh, Colly Salum Road and Long Plantation Boulevard. The, uh, school buses will come in to the, the parking lot, which is at the very front of the school. You can kinda see a yellow school bus parked in some actual parking spaces here, but there's a canopy where the school buses will drop off here, make a circle back around and, and exit the site in the front. At the backside of the school, a car rider line was constructed, uh, ten or twelve years ago where the car riders would drive in off of either Long Plantation or, um, Starling. Thank you, Ms. Herman. Starling Drive is, is like a boulevard here. Uh, the parents would enter the site at the back of the site. They would drive along here, uh, they would, uh, do they come?
Keep going, keep going.
Keep going here?
Yep.
Okay, they, they come around here on this, this access road, then they turn into the site and they come through a, a covered canopy, which is right here, and then they exit through this parking area and back out onto the, the driveway and, and exit the site from that point. Been discussions with Ms. Herman recently, um, she's telling me that the cars are backing up onto Camellia Boulevard, which, um, I don't have that, that much of a view here, but Starling goes all the way to Camellia Boulevard and then, any idea how far they're backing up on Camellia?
I was told, I haven't been all the way out there in some.
That's a long way. And how many cars do you have?
I have two hundred and, well, over two hundred in the morning and a hundred and twenty-five.
That's a lot of cars.
But they all line, like in the morning, it's not so bad. Like, as Shabwa said, that they're coming at different times. In the afternoon, they start lining up before two o'clock. It goes all the way, in the afternoon, before the bell rings, they're lined up down Camellia.
And your dismissal time is what time?
Is, we, we met the first kid out of Camellia.
So, parents will sit there from two o'clock to three oh five?
Oh, yeah.
And if a car tries to turn left onto Starling, all those lines backed up, there's a little road rage going.
Okay, and, uh, well, this is, this is a location.
How many, how many vehicles are showing up early? Cause it, it looks like there's, uh, about the same, a hundred vehicles different from the morning and the afternoon. Looks like there are a hundred, average of a hundred and twenty-three vehicles in the afternoon. About how many of those one twenty-three do you believe show up an hour or so before school lets out and park?
I would say by two thirty, they're all the way to Long Plantation. We walk out at, okay, so, the way we do it is somebody walks out and types in all the names and, uh, my person on duty walks all the way to Camellia before the bell rings.
That's, that's the only ones that I, uh, prepared aerial photographs for, so, um, can.
So, I, I'm the one who asked to have this on the agenda, um, because at least two schools, um, that I represent are having major problems. I think all of them are having problems. Um, Youngsville Middle and Green Tea Linen seem to have it under control because they're able to get in the neighborhoods and it's not problematic at all with the neighbors, uh, which is unusual, but it's working. Um, I understand, build it and they will come, however, you remember, you and I've had this conversation. We had this same conversation about Milton. We did something about it and it's working. Um, I know, well, well, it is our problem. It is our problem because it, it's, it's a school and we have to deal with it. Um, I'm, consider myself to be pretty, um, realist and I asked, can we charge parents? I was told, no. I asked, can we start marking these kids tardy and hold to it and discipline and do what we have to do? And I was told, no, because we're disciplining the kids for something the parents are doing. I asked, can we open earlier? And I was told, no, bec- rightfully so, because, you know, we can't expect teachers to come and, you know, do car duty so much earlier before school. So, I, I attempted, um, I've identified a problem, which I didn't, I didn't identify a problem. I'm bringing the problem to light. Um, I brought, I brought several recommendations. All I know is we need results, um, um, we need to do something about it. It's our problem. The Chief of Police in Youngsville, who I spoke to, is just like, it's, pretty much is in the same position that the state police were in a couple of years ago at Milton. They're ready to write citations. It's a problem for the community. It is a safety issue, um, and the number one thing is safety on the campus. So, I know that a two-lane drop-off lane, especially the way our schools are configured, is, um, is a safety hazard. But we've got to come up with a solution and if it means adding a longer car rider line, the bottom line is we can't stop the parents from bringing kids to school. If we can, let's figure out how we start doing that. Um, but since we haven't figured that out, we need to address it. I mean, I, I don't know how, are we just gonna say, "Well, nothing we can do about it, let's move on?" Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm just wondering, is that, is that the approach that, that, that we may take?
Nah, I don't think so. I think we need to, first of all, identify this as a priority. In, in my opinion, looking at the, the photographs, there's some capacity to add more car rider lines, space. Now, will it, will it accommodate two hundred and fifty cars? I don't think so, but we can definitely look at options. I see Galette and Bruceard and Burke having the capacity to add more space to queue up cars. I think what we do is we retain an architect or an engineering firm and we ask them to come back and bring us some recommendations. We have to realize that, that there is no quick fix for this problem. We are looking at, um, months of effort before we probably see the results of our, of any improvements we plan to make, but I think, I think we owe it to the community to look at the cost and the options available.
Um, one, one more thing. I know that the crushed limestone that was free was problematic. It was, it was, it was, I, I heard about it constantly at Ernest Galette, um, when they laid it down. However, we provide transportation to every student that attends Lafayette Parish School System. So, if a parent chooses to bring their kid to school and refuses to drive on crushed limestone, I just don't think that's the school system's problem. So, if that is the only option, uh, then I think that we need to, to seek that, uh, in my opinion.
Okay, so, to me, the last resort is to spend more money to build more driveways because it's not gonna fix the problem. It's just gonna encourage more people to drive. We have to get to the root cause of why people are choosing to drive and it's clear that there's two different issues. One, in the morning, it's convenient on the way to work. In the afternoon, you've got the moms who are lining up to get that good spot in line an hour ahead of time. They're the ones who are apparently parking and, on the street and blocking it because in the morning, it's mostly a constant flow, right? Okay. So, those two things have to be addressed from a completely different issue. And yes, the parents are choosing to not have their kids ride the bus. We provide free transportation as we're required to do. I don't think we have to bend over backwards for the parents who are choosing to drive their kids to, and so if they're parked on the street, whether it's Camellia or wherever, and the police wanna give them a ticket because they're blocking traffic, that is outside of our scope. That's a decision those parents have to make and a risk that they have to take. So, we need to drill down to the, the root cause. The money that we would be putting towards this, we need to be using to build new facilities so that we can get rid of the overcrowding at our existing schools and that's gonna take care of that, the car rider line. So, that's where our focus needs to be. If when the surveys are done, we're finding out that, oh, we don't wanna put our first grader on a bus because there's no seat belts, then it might be better for us to put seat belts on our buses and a lot more cost-effective. So, we need to figure out what the root causes are, but we can't assume that it's gonna be the same for the morning and the same for the afternoon. And we just need to, if necessary, we need to give parents a piece of paper that says, "In Youngsville, if you are parked on the street, you may be ticketed by the Youngsville Police. That is not a school board issue, that's with the city." Okay? Or if it's the state police or whatever. They need to make those decisions. I don't think it's a priority to have parents line up an hour in advance to get the good spot in line to get their kids. So, I, that's low priority to me. So, I'm not sure that this is rising to a, a critical need right now. I think there are a lot of other things that we can do. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
that if one-third, um, of the car riders at any of the schools here today, uh, any
Right. And, and that would be the root cause at your school.
of the, the schools or the principals who are here today would decide tomorrow morning
And I saw the overhead of your school and I agree, you're kinda landlocked, um, but
to get on a bus, that, there wouldn't be enough room on, on all of those, on most
Plantation, sorry to pick on you, for instance, has several different entry points and some
of those buses. So, we don't have enough capacity to bring all of those kids and, and, and so that's
side roads that, that can be used. Um, so, yeah, I mean, each school, the root cause is gonna be a little bit different
one of our issues that we're dealing with. Uh, and that may be one of the reasons people are bringing their kids to school, but again,
and there may be more than one.
I wanna stress, I agree with you, if we can eliminate that or reduce that amount of folks that bring their kids to school, let, let, I'm on board. But until we figure that out, we need to address, um, the serious issues at hand because it's, it's, it's an issue.
But the bus transportation we provide are based on the number of parents who mark on that piece of paper, "I'm gonna be a bus rider." So, if we have more bus riders, guess what? We just gave the bus drivers raises and incentives last night. We're gonna have more bus drivers and more buses, but we don't bring more on than what we need and that need is determined by those pieces of paper the parents are marking. So, if we all of a sudden have fifty parents who say, "Well, you know what? I will ride the bus," we're gonna get them a bus. We're gonna add that on.
We can get them a bus driver, yeah.
But they have to tell us, "We're gonna be on the bus." Well, we're working on the bus driver, so, we started last night.
Can we, yes, sir. If, I know it's kinda late in the game, but if you could come up to the microphone, we are recording the meeting, uh, that would be nice. Oh, it's perfect.
I'm at Charles Burke Elementary, one of the schools that they were talking about.
Yes, sir.
Um, one of the things that, um, we have, one of the problems is, is that we have, what, when you, when you say about buses, we have, uh, one bus that pulls two loads with us, so he has to leave and come back and pick up another load, which have, have, we have a set of kids that don't leave school till four, uh, three forty-five, when we got it three ten. So, that's, that's one of our problems. This is our first year with this much car riders and like you said, I'm not sure what, what's the cause of it. I think the first part of it is, when, when they did the transportation, a lot of the parents got fearful of what was going on with the transportation, didn't really wanna put their children on the bus. And now, they, they, they just don't wanna put them on the bus. And we've talked to some of them and, you know, our, our bus ride in the morning is, I mean, it flows, it goes real quickly. Afternoon, we had to get off of, uh, Ridgefield, put them on Ridge Road and now we're blocking, and we had, we had a corner. So, we have a four-way stop. You got traffic coming all different directions. The biggest thing that we look at now is that we have, we have to start our car rider almost at the, at Ridge Road and if it rains, then we have to get umbrellas to bring these kids to get in the car. Our parents come like, like, uh, as Shabwa said, our parents come at two, at two-ten. They start parking at two-ten, hour before school lets out. We actually had to tell parents to get back in their cars because they would come and sit in the building. At two-ten, they were sitting in the building. We had twenty people sitting in the building, twenty, thirty people in the building waiting for three-ten. It's, it's a problem and the biggest problem is, is we trying to get the people off of the road. We lucky, not like Mr. Bruceard, we have separate, uh, Mr. Booton, I'm sorry, we have separate areas for buses and for cars. We'll be, we'll also have some parents parking on that side and walking across to get their children because they don't wanna park on Ridge Road. I know, I know sometimes you look at priorities and that's not one, especially in the country where we are, and we are in the country. And, uh, we looked at two things, I, I think, uh, Mr. Boardlon looked at one with, well, on, on one side of the fence, but we can put it on, on the, on the school side of the fence and go across where it'd be a lot easier. We can do the limestone. We had someone come look at the limestone, but then DOT said that we had to have a cement driveway to come in and turn around with, or if we wanted to do two lanes, it had to be asphalt or concrete. So, the limestone would be fine with us. Y'all find me some limestone, put me one lane on this side of my fence, drop that, that front so they can turn, I'd be happy with that. But it's just, like you said, to find out why the parents are using a car, not using the buses. And we looked at two things. I think Mr. Bordelone looked at one on one side of the fence, but we can put it on the school's side of the fence and go across where it'd be a lot easier. We can do the limestone. We had someone come look at the limestone, but then DOT said that we have to have a cement driveway to come in and turn around with, or if we want to do two lanes, it had to be asphalt or concrete. So the limestone would be fine with us. Y'all find me some limestone, put me one lane on this side of my fence, drop that front so they can turn. I'd be happy with that. But it's just, like you said, to find out why the parents are using, not using the buses, our bus is almost all full. And like you said, you know, the parents put, they put car rider on there. Morning, like I said, we go through, I mean, the car rider in the morning, by 8:00, about 7:50, most of them, they're 8:00. We turned the little sign out. They have to get out of the car and come assign their children at 8:00 because they're tardy then. Afternoon, about 50 cars already parked before the bell even rings. So you know, it's just one of those things, you say, you know, we have to find a solution, but the solution is also is a dollar solution, is a money call. So that's another thing we have to look at, too. Thank you.
Mr. Hidalgo, we've got two other schools where principals are here. Would you allow them an opportunity maybe to articulate what they're experiencing?
Absolutely.
Broadmoor is Mr. Zelinski, and Casey Booer from Prairie.
While they're coming up, Doc, let me ask you, and you may want to think on this, but in the morning, it would be a lot harder to do, but in the afternoon, could we assign these parents a certain time?
Yes, yes, sir. We've talked with Ann. We have not done, we haven't done that, but we've talked about just indicating to parents, "Your pickup time is at this time," and then others, "Your pickup time would be 15 minutes later."
I've told parents to...
Yeah. Is that helping?
Yeah, it does help, yeah. But you're getting, I don't know, even I'm really not way out there. I mean, we're running through, at first it was 3:45. We've got it down to 3:30, and then we have about 6 to 10 queuing.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, sir. Go ahead.
Thanks. We had an issue at Broadmoor because I completely changed the way that we had drop off and pickup because it was untenable, in my view, and an unsafe situation with people driving into the baseball lot next door, dropping their kids off unescorted, walking across. And then in the afternoon, we would have people drop, park there, wait, and then pick up their kids as they were coming out to the car rider lane with no knowledge of, you know, who these people are picking up these kids. So I stopped that. So I increased by my actions the number of people who were picking up and dropping off their kids. What we did, Dr. Aguilar and Mr. Craig came out and looked at our situation, and I explained all the good parts about it and all the weaknesses, but we did get the police to come out, and we have a design flaw, too, because we have parking that's adequate for about a quarter of our faculty, and then we have one entrance for both buses and cars. But we're able to, in the morning, we changed the way the buses drop off, so we're able to get about nine cars out at a time, and we don't have a problem in the morning now. Once we stopped all the cars coming from the, we have all the cars coming from Edgar Martin and Holy Cross Church, and they stay next to the boulevard, so the traffic's able to get through on the right-hand side. They're not blocking the fire station. They're not blocking the side streets. They only take lefts, and those occasional people who try to take a right, every car that's five cars behind them will tell me that person cut in line, and we let them know, and they don't do it again, for the most part. So that goes quickly. We also put about six more faculty members out front, and one issue was that we have a lot of little kids who it takes a long time to get out of the car. So now we open the doors for all the kids, and not only does it work, but it also is, I think, a really good statement to the parents, and it just looks good. In the afternoon, they start lining up. We do get all of our buses. We have one bus that's been running a little late, but we get all of our buses out. And then we have a system with IDs, and I get out at the street and start walkie-talkie in the street, the cars as they come in, and all of our kids are inside, so the parents can't come and take them without, you know, us knowing who they are. And it takes us, we moved 84 cars in 13 minutes. And the line, at the beginning of the car line, it goes down to Amos Robley, but once it starts moving, it moves. And so we had a big issue, and the biggest issue was the people who were coming from the other side because it was a single road instead of the boulevard. And when we put everyone on the boulevard and started being able to enforce that, it made a couple of adjustments in the way buses dropped off and picked up. Our issue, despite our design flaws, is not nearly what it was. So we were successful, but we also don't have as many people picking up and dropping off. We average about 184 in the morning, 180, something like that, and around 90 in the afternoon.
Prairie Elementary in the morning does about 250 on average, and we know the reason why they're being dropped off at Prairie Elementary School of Choice. Parents tell me they don't like the Target Satellite Stop because it takes longer to get to Target than it does to get to Prairie. So they come there. We've had the state police out, the city police, looking at our car rider line. They're saying we're doing it as fast as we possibly can do it. We open the doors. My assistant principal's out there calling the names. We're lining the kids up. We've moved the pre-K to a Butler Building, so the parents have to park and come get them because they're the slowest to listen to their names, to try to speed it up that way. In the morning, it takes about 35 minutes to get out 250 cars. In the afternoon, I think Ms. Walker has it down to 20 minutes to get out about 150. And in the afternoon, we have Panda Care after-school program, so it takes a good portion of those. We've been working with our parents to tell them to stop blocking parking lots, streets, but they come early. They start lining up in our campus at 1:30. I think they watch three PE classes. We've invited them in to come work in the library, you know, but they're still lining up. Couple of things I would like to see happen is if we could force the turn at the end of the driveway to go right, because right now, what happens as they're exiting, they're going right and they're going left because we don't have an officer at the street right there. We have our officer currently on Ambassador Cafrey, and he's directing the buses to get them in and out. We've asked for a police officer for the car rider line because I think it would make it even faster, but they said they have a hard time staffing those police officers because they're off-duty and it's a very short amount of time that they're working. So they have a hard time finding those. So, but they did say Prairie's doing it as fast as we can do it, and I know what, they're coming because of School of Choice.
And Mr. Hidalgo, I forgot to mention Drexel is here, Denise Swallow. Do you want to tell us about your traffic?
I have a whole bunch, oh, I've got to come on.
Calm down.
You're kicking on me. I don't have a whole bunch different to say, except the Broussard police got tired of me standing in the middle of the road and directing traffic so that the buses could get through because they were literally blocked for about a half hour. And so they came and said I was endangering myself. I said, "Well, then, somebody needs to get over here." So they have literally barricaded the road right next to Drexel between the school and the graveyard, and they're making the cars take the next block, which makes the line longer. We do have parents who come out and park at 1:30, and I've given them notes and said, you know, "Pull up as close as you can." Our main thing is as long as we're not on St. De Porus, we're okay. The neighborhood has not complained about us blocking driveways and things. But we have some parents who refuse to pull up because they want to park, they're there at 1:30, and they want to park under the pine tree. They want to be in the shade. And I mean, so we've gone to them and talked to them and things, but we have eliminated a lot. We, I will tell you, one of our biggest problems was the new bus routes, and we, kids, parents could not get their kids on buses, and we couldn't put them on a bus at first, at the beginning of the year. Well, once they gave us the okay for us to start putting kids on buses, my secretary was a jewel, and we gave a survey to our parents in line, and we said, "Are you in this line because you can't get on a bus? If so, give us your name, child's name, address." And my secretary got them on buses. And so we still have a large number, but we are finishing both first load, second load, and car rider within 25 minutes of the bell ringing. My biggest problem is buses, well, my school is gridlocked, landlocked, and I don't have place to put all of my buses at one time. So we're fighting that, but it's working. Broussard City Police did a great job of helping me. So right now, we're okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Hidalgo, we'll be happy to generate that survey for car riders and try to gather some information.
Absolutely. First good step. And do you know, do you happen to know Mesakwa, when Youngsville's going to implement their right turn only? Okay. Thank you. The only other thing I want to mention is it sounds like the only one that doesn't have any kind of resolve at all whatsoever is Broussard Middle. So if we can do a little more than a survey on that and try to figure out...
Absolutely. And I recall having a conversation about the possibility of building a car rider line to the left of the school. So we'll go back and look at the notes and try to bring back some ideas.
Thank you. Anybody else had any, have any addition, any input?
I was just going to say, I can tell you that actually how far down it's going. His parents may be exaggerating.
That's the long way. Yeah, that's a long way for 100 or 150 cars, so. Okay, item 2.4, update on gymnasium AC project. Mr. Bordelone?
I have attached to your agenda item a bidding schedule. As you may recall, at the last regular board meeting on September 13th, there were two bids that were approved for the air conditioning at six gymnasiums. At the next board meeting on October 11th, I think I'm saying that right, yeah, October 11th, we're going to have a package of three gymnasiums that, as long as the bids come in that are under the budget, we will be recommending approval of that package. In, at the meeting in November, there will be three packages of, a total of nine gymnasiums, and that'll be the last of the projects. And again, as long as those bids come in under the budgeted funds, we'll be recommending approval to get those projects moving forwards. We did receive, on the projects that were awarded by the board, we did receive those contracts today. They were dropped off, so we'll be getting those signed in order to get those six, first six projects moving forward as quickly as we can.
Any comments, questions on this? 2.5 HVAC maintenance contract. Mr. Bordelone?
Okay. I bring this item to the board, to the facilities committee basically as an introduction-type item. As you may or may not recall, we have been under an HVAC maintenance contract with Bernhard Mechanical now for the last four years. We're entering, we've entered the fifth year of the five-year contract. Over the last five years, there's been several projects, like the building additions at Green T. Linden, the building additions at Thibodeau STEM, at LJ Alamo, at Youngsville Middle, some renovations at Career Center, Child Nutrition Services, Carren Crow Heights and the Kitchen, Northside High, GMs, we added air conditioning, Southside High, the new facility, and Westside Elementary renovations, which is actually becomes a decrease to the contract. But because of the addition of this equipment, technically, in accordance with the contract, the contractor is able to request an amendment to increase the dollars to be paid on the maintenance because there are new and additional air conditioner units and equipment that he is, he is doing preventative maintenance on. They're changing filters. They're making repairs on if something breaks or whatever. So they do recognize that many of these projects, probably they should have come to us sooner, but that is then and this is now. So they have developed a proposal that they, that's attached of the cost that they're requesting to increase and amend the contract by, because of this additional equipment that's been added to our system. I have been in touch with the engineering firm that helped us put together the initial proposal. They said in general, and they just, they've looked at it for just a day or two, so that there's not been any detailed kind of study on it, but in general, they are acceptable to the amount of money that's being requested. There are a few details that they would like to sit down with Bernhard Mechanical, have some more detailed discussions with before a full approval on their part would be, or a full recommendation on their part would be given to us. But again, in general, they are agreeable to the amount of money, which is, according to the handout for year one, would be $174,600 increase to the existing maintenance contract. You may note that Westside Elementary shows up as a negative, and that is because the existing Westside Elementary School is currently being renovated. All of the equipment that was there is being removed and replaced with new equipment. So at this point in time, the contractor is not maintaining any equipment there. So he's recognizing that and taking and backing that out of the contract. Now, once, once Westside is completed and we've moved back in, there's going to be a one-year warranty period on the new equipment that the installing contractor will warrant, but there will be some preventative maintenance and filter changes that we will have to be responsible for. So that's why we talk, you see in the second section of that summary, just like on Southside High and for the Northside High GM air conditioning projects, the first-year warranty will cover any repairs if equipment breaks down. Aside from that, there's still preventative maintenance, checking belts, checking and changing air filters, greasing of pulleys and things like that, that still have to be part of the normal maintenance routine. So you have a first-year contract, and then during the second year after completion of each of these is when the full, if you want to call it the full, maintenance costs kick in. And as we renovate buildings or add on to buildings or even build new buildings, this is going to be a continuing process that we're going to try and stay on top of a little better. And so what I'm telling you is there will be some future amendments to this contract in, for the future. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Yeah. Who did the units at Southside? And the new construction?
The units at Southside, the mechanical contractor for the general contractor is Bernhard Mechanical.
They don't have a standard warranty and a standard maintenance plan with new equipment?
The standard warranty on any construction project is one year from the date of substantial completion, and if anything, if like if an air handler was to break, they would come out within that first year and they would repair it. However, the filter changes or any preventative maintenance is incumbent upon the owner.
So is it safe to say that this $88,000 for Southside wouldn't kick in until next year after the one-year warranty is up?
No, sir. The $88,000 covers preventative maintenance, belts, checking of belts, greasing pulleys, greasing grease zerts on pumps, routine preventative maintenance on the chillers, the boilers, changing the air filters quarterly. And as you can see from that list, there's a lot of equipment at Southside High. So that first year is preventative maintenance items. Cleaning of coils is included in there. is Bernhard Mechanical.
They don't have a standard warranty and a standard maintenance plan with new equipment?
The, the standard warranty on, on any construction project is one year from the date of substantial completion, and if, if anything, if, if like, if an air handler was to break, they would come out within that first year and they would repair it. However, the, the filter changes or any preventative maintenance is incumbent upon the owner.
So, is, is it safe to say that this $88,000 for Southside wouldn't kick in until next year after the one-year warranty is up?
No, sir. The, the $88,000 covers, covers preventative maintenance, belts, checking of belts, greasing pulleys, greasing grease zerts on, on pumps, routine preventative maintenance on the chillers, the boilers, changing the air filters quarterly, and, and as you can see from that list, there's a lot of equipment at Southside High. So, that first year is, is preventative maintenance items, cleaning, cleaning of coils is included in there. So that, that's what's covered on the first year of the maintenance side. If there's, if there's, again, if there's a unit that breaks, that, that fails, then the, the standard one-year warranty covered by the construction contract, they would come out and fix that at no charge to us.
Four years ago, was this a bid process that was used to choose Bernhard?
It was a, it was a combination of a bid process and a qualifications process.
And that was, what was the total length of the contract with them?
Five years.
And we're in the fourth year?
We're in the fourth year, yes, sir. And it, it was a five-year contract with an option to renew for an additional two years. So at some point in the next, before the school ends, we'll be coming back to you with some kind of recommendation, either to extend for another two years or to go out for bids again, basically.
Any questions?
I do, but I'm not sure how to ask them. So obviously Bernhard is a large enough company that they can handle the amount of maintenance and HVAC work that we need for a system. Are there other businesses in our locale that are also equally capable, size-wise, I guess, or manpower-wise?
Back, back four years ago, we had three, three firms, three or four firms, three for sure, I can't remember if it was four, that submitted proposals. Bernhard was one, there was a firm from the Baton Rouge area, and there was another firm from somewhere, I think in the Hammond area, that submitted proposals. I believe there's other firms here that have offices here in Lafayette, they're, that may be capable of this, not real sure, but you're right, it does take, take a lot of manpower to take care of as many schools as we have.
One of my concerns is that when we just renew, you know, Bernhard's the only one who's giving us bids, right, so we have to take their word for what the value is of these services. And in general, and not, this is not a reflection on Bernhard, but in general, if I'm going to do a contract and I'm going to say, "Well, I think my services are worth this," I'm going to put a higher number maybe than I actually think I can get. I mean, that's what people do when they enter into contract negotiations, they don't put their bottom line the first time. So, I'm not sure what steps we need to take to make sure we're getting the fairest market price under a renewal, if it's not going up to a new bid process. The advantage of a bid process is the competitiveness for the, the best cost savings, so I'm not sure, that's a pretty substantial amount of money to add for a two-year contract on the fly without more information.
Well, again, the, the funds that are listed here are for the additional equipment. The, the contract as it stands today is just a little over $2 million per year, and that's for the 46 sites, 46, seven, or seven sites that we have. So, out of that listing that you see, the $174,000 is for that additional equipment we've added over the last four years.
And, and what was the reason they're just asking for it now?
I'm not sure there is a reason. In my discussions with Bernhard, they, they do recognize that they could have asked for it for some of these, they could have asked for multiple, I say multiple increases, increases at different points in time, when we brought new projects online, or we took possession of different projects. For, for reasons I can't explain, they didn't ask for it at the time, but they are not trying to go back and make anything retroactive. What they're asking for is from August 1st of 2017 moving forward, they're, they're asking for these, these additional funds to take care of this new equipment that's been added over the last four years.
All right, got any other question? Any comments from anyone here? Thank you, Mr. Bordelone.
Okay.
All right, that's, that's it for the agenda. Thank, thank you to the principals and everybody showing up here today for your input, and we appreciate you coming out. Meeting adjourned.